And it's recording? I see it. There it goes.
There you go.
Okay, this is a public hearing on the proposed reestablishment and correction of the drainage system records for Ramsey-Washington Judicial Ditch 1 under the statute section 103E, 1-on-1 subdivision 48. I would ask anybody to identify themselves. Why don't everybody identify themselves for the record? Okay. Why don't we go ahead? Go ahead and start.
I'm attending by Zoom. This is Mike Bradley, manager from Rice Creek.
Marcy Wynett, manager from Rice Creek, attending by Zoom.
Okay.
I'll call the board. John, would you introduce yourself?
John Cole, I am the legal counsel for the watershed district related to public drainage matters.
Ashley?
I'm Ashley Ritchie. I'm the acting public drainage inspector for Rice Creek.
Tom Schmidt.
I'm Tom Schmidt, joining by Zoom. I am the public drainage inspector for Rice Creek.
Dennis?
Say again.
Dennis, just introduce yourself, please.
Yes, I wasn't sure I was on or not. I'm Dennis Hellunder. I'm a professional engineer, retired professional engineer, but I live right on the creek. We call it a creek, not a ditch. And it's a beautiful little stretch of water there, so.
Thank you. Chris?
Chris Otterness, I'm district engineer for Rice Creek Watershed District.
Garrett?
Garrett Munson, I am the drainage engineer for the Rice Creek Watershed District, working with Chris Otterness as district engineer.
Okay.
There's a Mike out there.
Yeah, Mike Ludwig, homeowner here at the creek also.
Thank you, Mike. And we have two unidentified folks joining us by phone. One phone number ends in 07, 09.
That is me.
Yes?
That is John Hughesinger. I live on Bartella Court, adjacent to the creek.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and the other phone number ends in 4828. Could you give that a call yourself, please?
My name is Tom Horack, and I also live on Bartella Court, adjacent to the creek.
My name is John Waller. I'm here in the office of the Lightfoot County Manager.
Steve Wagman, Anoka County Manager for Rice Creek.
Pat Priner, President and Anoka County Manager.
Nick Tomshack, I am the administrator for Rice Creek. Is there anyone that we didn't identify on the call with us tonight? I think we covered everything. Thank you.
Teresa.
Teresa. Oh, I'm sorry.
Teresa, Office Manager.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to get started. I'd like to welcome everyone who has come this evening. Under consideration at this hearing is a reestablishment and correction of the drainage system. Drainage system records for JV1, including defining the alignment, cross-section, profile, hydraulic structure locations, materials, dimensions, and elevations, and the right-of-way of the public drainage system. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic pursuant to Minnesota statutes 15E021, meeting of the Board of Managers are currently being convened remotely by video teleconference. Notice was previously provided with instructions on how to participate in today's hearing. I ask that those of you on attendance remotely mute your microphones until it is your turn to speak. The purpose of this hearing is to review the engineers' investigation, to report the findings, and receive comment from those affected by the proposal, reestablishment, and correction of the public drainage system record. This is an evidentiary proceeding. Proceedings are being reported in order to preserve the record. The order of business for this hearing will be as follows. First, Mr. Tomseck, the district's administrator, will introduce a presentation of information related to the district and its functions. The district's management of the public drainage system, the engineer's review of the public drainage system, and subsequent actions that may occur following these proceedings. Mr. Tomseck will be assisted by Mr. Cole, the district's legal counsel, and Mr. Otterness, the district's engineer. Following the staff presentations, I will open for public comment. The board would like to hear your comments on the proposed reestablishment, correction of the drainage system records, and any information relevant to this purpose. Specifically, the board is interested in whether there is missing information used to define the public drainage system, whether a recommended alignment, grade, or configuration that ditch creates concerns about loss of drainage benefit, whether and how your land drains to the public system, whether you have concerns or issues associated with the alignment of the public system crossing your property. During the public hearing, managers may ask questions of staff and consultants making presentations and of commenters in order to clarify any testimony. In addition, if a member of the public asks a question a manager believes that a response from the district staff or district consultant can readily resolve the question on our rich testimony, the manager may ask me to have the appropriate staff member or consultant speak to the question. I will exercise my judgment as to whether or not to allow discussion. Managers' expression of their positions and general discussion concerning the subject of the public hearing should be avoided during the public comment portion of the public hearing. Or discussion will occur after all members of the public have had a chance to speak and the public comment period has closed. Or discussion may occur and be concluded at this time or on subsequent meeting as the board decides. Members of the public participating remotely were asked to identify themselves before the hearing. You will be recognized from the list of commenters provided by staff. When I call your name, please unmute your microphones, speak clearly, and state your name and address for the record, and then make your comment. If you have a specific question concerning the proposed reestablishment and correction of public drainage record, we may ask our administrator, engineer, or legal counsel to respond. If you have anything in writing you wish to submit, you may contact the district office to make arrangements for its delivery, and I will notice receipt for the record. To ensure that all wishing to comment on the proposed reestablishment and correction of public drainage system record have time to speak, I may limit the time to, or any single speaker may comment up to five minutes. Please limit redundant or repetitive comments. So, would any of the board members wish to offer any further remarks before we begin? Any of the members? Hearing number, Mr. Tomseck?
Thank you. Garrett has put up on the screen, for those of you by phone, a short PowerPoint of the Ramsey-Washington Judicial Ditch 1. Good evening to you all. Again, I'm Nick Tomshack. I'm the administrator for Rice Creek Watershed District. Again, this is a public hearing on that system, and certainly I note that our managers are present and have introduced themselves. Next slide, Garrett, please. The district, on April 14th, held a public information meeting regarding this ditch system. This presentation does cover some similar information. This, however, is a public hearing, is specific to the proceedings that are necessary in state statute for the district to reestablish the public drainage record. Its goal is to define and describe the ASIC, which is an acronym for as constructed subsequently improved condition of the public drainage system. It's a process for determining that condition. We certainly hope to have some information sharing so that our record is complete. Next slide, please, Garrett. On the screen now is illustration, a map of the drainage area for Ramsey-Washington JV1. The drainage system, that's a fancy word for the ditch. Some of you refer to it as a creek. It does have a legal meaning for us, so it is the drainage system. On the map, you'll see the drainage area is generally located to the east of Baldigo Lake, to the north of White Bear Lake. On the map, the ditch itself is turquoise in color and is to the left-hand side of the screen in kind of a fishhook shape. The blue area that surrounds this is the drainage area through the ditch system. The ditch in turn outlets into Baldigo Lake off to the west. There is the outlet for at least seven named lakes within the blue area, and also parts of multiple cities that share that same geographic area. We will use the Ramsey, or RWJD1 acronym for the rest of the presentation. And with that, I would like to hand it off to John Cole, the district's legal counsel for our public drainage matters.
Very briefly, on the screen now is the legal standard for the hearing, and I'll outline a little bit of the history moving forward in this process. The district has systematically been reviewing all of the drainage systems under its jurisdiction to determine the status of the records defining the alignment, grade, configuration, and hydraulic efficiency of various crossings within those drainage systems, to include the right-of-way occupied by the drainage system. One of those that was investigated was ARJD1, or I'm sorry. It was Ramsey-Washington JD1, I'm sorry. And the engineer made a report based on the condition of the records and what records were present and what records were missing. That initial report was filed with the district in March of this year, and based on that report, the board adopted Resolution 2021-06, initiating the reestablishment of records process. What the statute outlines is a process that says after investigation of the drainage system records, if the drainage authority finds that records are either missing, lost, destroyed, or otherwise incomplete, it may by order reestablish the records. The process outlined in statute involves an investigation of available documentation as well as on-the-ground investigation, which will be described by the engineer, to determine a grade line and the hydraulic efficiency of the as constructed system. The board's standard for a decision is based on a weight of evidence. And that weight of evidence is influenced by the investigation and evidence discovered by and provided by the engineer in the proceedings. At the close of this hearing, the board will make a decision as to whether or not to adopt, modify, or return the matter to the engineer based on the engineer's recommendation as to the, again, alignment, grade, configuration, dimension, and the efficiency of crossings and the right-of-way for the drainage system. In preparation for tonight's hearing, as was previously discussed, there was a public information meeting, and specifically to the hearing tonight, notice was given in several formats, which I will run through for the record. Published notice was provided in the Pioneer Press newspaper on May 6, 13, and 20, in the Forest Lake Times newspaper on May 10, in the Citizen newspaper on May 20, in the White Bear Press newspaper on May 12. In addition, the district provided a postcard notice to the owners of all properties within the sub watershed of Ramsey-Washington JD1, and that was mailed on May 10, 2021. The district also provided notice to the cities of Delwood, Grant, Hugo, and White Bear Lake, to White Bear Lake Township, Ramsey County, the Ramsey County Engineer, the Ramsey County Soil and Water Conservation District, Washington County, the Washington County Public Works Department, the Washington County Public Health and Environment Office, the Washington County Conservation District, and these notices were mailed on May 5, 2021. The district also provided notice on its website and posted notice at its office commencing on May 5, 2021, and remaining posted through the date of tonight's hearing. The district also has received requests for email notice from various entities and provided those notices on May 5, 2021. The notice and the historical review technical memorandum, which will be reviewed tonight as amended, which is dated May 4, 2021, was mailed to the Department of Natural Resources, Board of Water and Soil Resources, and Army Corps of Engineers on May 5, 2021. Prior to the submission of the amended technical memorandum, the board received comments from the Department of Natural Resources, and the amended memorandum addresses those comments. The Rice Creek Watershed District also emailed the amended report to the DNR on May 5, 2021. Provisions have been made this evening to address the ongoing conditions and concerns of the public regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, allowing participation in this meeting by remote means. Again, for the purposes of tonight's hearing, Madam President and board, it is a public hearing. You are required to hear all evidence and weigh all evidence. Based on the evidence presented to you, you will make a decision based on, of whether the engineer's recommendation accurately reflects the as constructed or originally constructed condition of the drainage system to include the drainage system's right-of-way, and that will serve as a baseline for future actions to be considered for the drainage system. Madam President, subject to your questions or any questions of the board, I will return the presentation to Mr. Tomshack, and I believe I am followed by the engineer.
Is there any questions on the board for Mr. Cole? None. Go ahead, Nick.
Yes, President Pryor, board managers. Next on the agenda is Garrett Munson to present the report on JV1.
Good evening. I'm going to do a quick little recap of some of the roles that are happening here and then dive right into the history of the system and then what our findings are. So just a quick, big-picture overview, consistent with what John said in a lot of legal terms, is that the district is the administrator for the system on behalf of assessed landowners. And that's why this hearing is important, to meet those statutory requirements, to make sure that the public has the opportunity to provide comment on that system. So it's important to note that as the landowners in the system, if you have information that is pertinent to these proceedings, that you share that, and there will be an opportunity for that at the end of the presentation. Just a few big-picture items on public drainage is the drainage system is owned by the benefited landowners, administered by the district, and that those benefited lands have the right to drain water to the ditch. And that's within reason. You know, there's a design capacity of these things. But it's meant to be an outlet for stormwater runoff or enhanced drainage within its drainage area. And then as the water management authority throughout the Rice Creek Watershed District, the district and the board must balance the needs of all users, including those in RWJD1 and downstream. So it's important to recognize that their decision on these proceedings, as well as many others, are in that context. Again, in broad strokes, the purpose of reestablishing the record in this case is that many of the records related to the establishment, improvement, and management of the system in the past have either been lost or destroyed. So the intent of this proceeding is to establish that historical record based on the greatest weight of evidence, as has been stated. This is an evidentiary proceeding, so we need the evidence to justify the findings that we arrive at. And that's to describe the current system and determine its as constructed and subsequently improved condition. So looking at that history, how was it built, and then what was done to modify it to get to where we are today? And then that as constructed and subsequently improved condition, or the ASIC, becomes the baseline for future maintenance and modifications of the drainage system. And this is important because Minnesota State statute has a differentiation between a repair or improvement. Anything that's restoring the capacity of the drainage system to the as constructively and subsequently improved condition, or ASIC, is considered a repair. Anything beyond that, deepening or modifying the cross-section beyond what is permissible under the statute for repair, would be considered improvement and then has further statutory requirements for regulatory review and other matters. So getting into some of the history of RWJD1. The system was established in 1909, so it's well over 100 years old. It consists of a main trunk. There are no branches. It's two miles of open channel, and it is entirely open channel. Jurisdiction was conveyed to the Rice Creek Watershed District from Anoka and Ramsey Washington, or Anoka, or excuse me, Ramsey and Washington Counties in 1973. So the Joint Drainage Authority transferred the jurisdiction to the Rice Creek Watershed District. This should look somewhat familiar, as it is a map of the RWJD1 drainage area with the addition of the benefited areas in this purple hatch. So one thing to note is that these are the original benefits, plus those that were added as part of an improvement in 1922. So these are the lands that were determined at one period in time to benefit from the public drainage system, and they have been the ones who, in the past, have paid for activity to maintain or repair the public drainage system. Now, you can also see that that benefited area is substantially smaller than the entire drainage area of Ramsey-Washington Judicial Ditch 1. This is not rare within the state of Minnesota, that when we go through these exercises, this is the case. And there are a number of things that can lead to this, but at one point in time, the drainage area of this drainage system may have been smaller, and over time, drainage patterns may have been altered or enhanced to expand that drainage area, as well as land use and other activities that change the way that lands benefit from the drainage system can have an impact on how those lands are viewed to benefit from the drainage system. As an engineer, thankfully, that's not my job to determine who does benefit from the drainage system. There's a whole nother group of people called viewers who take care of that, but I just wanted to make you aware of what the drainage system is and who the benefited landowners are, have been to date. So the current alignment is a nice little fishhook, as Nick shared. It does outlet into Baldigo Lake and starts at Highway 7 north of Shunnaman Marsh. It drains south, or north to south, and then east to west. The alignment has not changed substantially over the years, although there have been a few modifications towards the downstream end that we'll talk about. Some of the system modifications include a 1924 improvement. The process was started in '22 but constructed in '24, and that extended the upstream extent of the drainage system from a point near Shunnaman Marsh up to that county highway 7. So that also had some modifications of the benefited landowners associated with it. Then, in 1995, a repair was completed, and that also included reshaping of the channel, or a portion of the channel, making it a four-foot bottom with two-to-one side slopes from Taylor Avenue to approximately 170 feet upstream of Portland Avenue. Then, in 2003, there were some downstream modifications, including the construction of some stormwater ponds or regional ponds for water quality reasons prior to discharging to Baldigo Lake. And then there are also a number of other features along RWJD1, including those Highway 61 ponds that I noted in the previous slide, as well as a fish barrier that was recently reconstructed at the downstream end of the system. It's important to note that these are not components of the public drainage system. They are features along it, but they are not inherently impoundments or anything that would make them a component of the public drainage system. So that was all looking at the record and what we had documentation of. Then we completed our field investigation to take a look at some of the current conditions of the public drainage system. Starting at the downstream end, as I noted before, they recently reconstructed fish barrier. Then, as we look at these ponding areas near Highway 61, we can see a lot of accumulated sediment and vegetation near the outlets and inlets of these ponds, culverts that are grossly overgrown. And as we start to go upstream into this more residential area, we can see that the channel is heavily lined with brush, with some deadfalls crossing the ditch. And this is important to note, that although the capacity of the drainage system, even if it is not impacted, which in this case it is, there is a lot of accumulated sediment in there, but even if that wasn't the case, vegetation and brush along the public drainage system also poses a risk to the public drainage system because the drainage authority needs to be able to gain access to the system to complete maintenance and inspection activities in the case of there being some kind of emergency, something blocking the drainage system, a beaver dam being constructed, things like that, that they need to be able to access the system to complete work on it. As we move further upstream, get near Portland Avenue, we see that the Portland Avenue culvert itself is regularly inundated, as well as blocked by a lot of material, perchance some concrete or chunks of riprap, as well as a lot of muck and sediment and vegetation. And then as we get up towards the outlet of Shunnaman Marsh, the channel is open, some heavy vegetation lining the channel. One thing to note in here is there is this pocket of algae along the grass, and one of the things I want to point that out is, we pay attention to when we see things like this in the field, it can be indicative of stagnant water or helps us highlight areas where we might want to take a closer look at what's downstream to see if there's something limiting the capacity in this area. So it makes sense that in this situation, we would see some signs of stagnant water upstream of a culvert that's regularly inundated and showing that it's partially or completely blocked. So some of the problem areas that we identified in our field review of the public drainage system is that persistent flooding upstream of Portland Avenue culvert and the pipe being partially blocked. And then the other concern that I noted is the deadfalls and heavy vegetation and sedimentation in other portions of RWJD1. Accumulated sediment exceeding a foot or more, which can greatly reduce channel capacity, and, as I noted, the deadfalls and heavy vegetation that make access difficult. It's also important to note that vegetation within the channel itself, whether it be cattails or tall grasses, does reduce that hydraulic capacity by reducing the hydraulic efficiency of the drainage system. So it's in the best interest of the benefited landowners to usually keep that drainage system clear and flowing regularly to provide a reliable outlet. One of the other things that we review through this process is the public drainage system right-of-way. When the drainage system was originally established, damages were awarded during that process for the area physically occupied by the ditch, as well as the area necessary to construct and maintain the drainage system. And those damages were paid at one time, but their impact goes on in perpetuity. So we determine that right-of-way based on the available record, whether there's cut sheets or things like that, as well as taking a look at what the channel depths are, to look at what volume of material may have been excavated, to do a review of historic aerial photography for visible spoil areas, a review of topography or survey information gathered to see if a spoil pile or other signature of the original construction is readily available. It's important to note that public drainage systems have what we call a implied easement, that it may not necessarily, and often is not recorded on the parcel, but still has power nonetheless. This right-of-way does not mean that it is a public walking corridor. Rather, it is a right-of-way that's to be used by the district, their staff, or their assigns for the purposes of inspecting and maintaining the public drainage system or completing the business of the drainage authority. So that's a review of what the historic record was, as well as the condition of the public drainage system. What's next for this drainage system? There, we're recommending that the board complete a findings in order, adopting the details outlined in the report and briefly summarized in this presentation. The district will continue their routine inspection and maintenance program, and there will be future landowner engagement ahead of repairs to the system. The drainage authority, the Rice Creek Watershed District as drainage authority, has added this system to their prioritized list to be repaired based on the conditions that were found. found in the field during this review. Once again, a quick reminder on input that's relevant to the public hearing. Specifically, we as the engineer will be wondering, are we missing information that was used to define the public drainage information system? Or do you have information that we believe, that you believe we missed? Are we accurately describing the extents, both the alignment and the cross-section? Do you have any concerns about loss of drainage benefit? In this case, we're not recommending any abandonment or anything like that, but is there something about what we've presented that causes you concern? And then are there any concerns or issues specifically associated with the public drainage system crossing your property and the described easement? And with that, I will turn the meeting back over to Madam President, you and the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And so right now, we want to know if the board members have any questions for the staff or consultants before we begin.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
It's Mike Bradley. Garrett, you showed us the benefited property as being a small component of the sub watershed. And you also showed that there was a piece of property up in Hugo, north of the sub watershed that's listed as a benefited property. And I'm trying to figure out, assuming that we're going to have a water management district fund to help pay for a portion of this, will we be, what's the relevance of the benefited property versus non-benefited property within that sub watershed?
So great question, Madam President, if I may address it. A couple of different things there. One, big caveat at the very beginning, when it comes to benefited lands, I'm not a viewer, so I can't speak to the specifics as to why a specific parcel may or may not be benefited by the public drainage system. There are multiple reasons, whether it had some benefit derived that's different than its neighbors for some inherent land use change that the outlet of the public drainage system provided, but I'm not aware of that information. You also raise a, I'll call it a second point about the current funding mechanisms that are often used by the Rice Creek Watershed Drainage or Rice Creek Watershed District as Drainage Authority. And you mentioned the Water Management District. In these situations, if a Water Management District is established, then the entire drainage area helps foot the bill for the drainage system. And that is based on a engineering analysis looking at runoff that's generated by parcels to the public drainage system. So it is a runoff-based approach to funding public drainage system maintenance and repairs.
Thank you for that.
Manager Wallace?
Thank you, Madam President. May I offer a comment about this section of property that's north of the Ramsey, Washington County JD1 drainage area? I personally know the property and I know that it drains into Branch 1 of ditch number 2, Washington County ditch number 2. So one of the purposes of this is to correct the historic record, and that may be a typographical error or some error, but that definitely does flow, and it's a private ditches into Branch 1 of JD2. And it needs to be corrected. Thank you very much, Manager Bradley.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'll just note with the response to both of those questions, and they're very good questions and comments on that, it is important to note that, you know, we're talking within the record about the alignment grade, cross-section and right of way of the drainage system. The benefits we're just showing for informational purposes at this time, based on what the benefits were listed back at the time of establishment, but they really don't have any bearing on how we're viewing the system right now, particularly given that the district hasn't been using the benefits to get funds for drainage system repairs. And so if we were to try to correct those benefits on the system, we would do that under a redetermination of benefits process, which would be a different proceeding under the statute. So again, that was just for informational purposes and really to how the district is administering the drainage system at this time, it has very little bearing.
Manager Wallace?
Thank you, Madam President. So a comment in it, other than this issue about what benefits properties are, and I realize we're not at the point yet where we're determining a water management district yet, which is the process which is correct, those things, I hope. But the culverts, some of them you've shown that need to be repaired or replaced or, and my recommendation is that you put in box culverts wherever you can. I realize the county or the city, they object to it because they're a little more expensive, but they are much better in maintaining the flow and being able to take care of the system over a long period of time. As that was our experience in Washington County JD2 was to put in those box culverts and they've been just a terrific item to keep the system functioning as efficiently as it can.
Okay, any other board comments? If not, then we're ready to hear from a member of the public who wish to comment. Again, please state your name and address as you begin your comments. Anybody in the audience that'd like to comment tonight?
My name is Tom Horak. I live at 2670 Bartila Court, which is a townhome development just to the south of the creek, right by Portland. And I've lived here since 2005. And in the last four or five years where we've had rather abundant rains in the summertime, we've noticed considerable flooding on our property, particularly in the spring, where the culvert underneath Portland seems to be plugged and the water backs up, the weather actually looks like a lake and it extends over onto our property. So we're very concerned about how to plan for the future. Since the culvert has been cleaned last year, last fall, and into this spring, the problem has been significantly improved. We've had no flooding, as a matter of fact, this year, but we are concerned about it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
Regarding the culvert under Portland, I'm glad that some level of cleaning has alleviated that. That's one of the things that we will, that's part of our recommendation moving forward is that the district continue with their regular inspection and maintenance activities. And in these cases, the culverts on the public drainage system are actually the property of the entity who own that crossing. So if it's a private crossing on private property, like a culvert in a backyard, that crossing is the responsibility of the landowner to inspect and maintain. However, the district may inspect it and request that the landowner complete maintenance or pursue other opportunities to either assist or direct that to occur. If it's a road authority, it is the road authority's responsibility to inspect and maintain their culvert. Again, the district does also inspect those crossings as well as coordinate with those road authorities. And I know that the district has been engaged with Ramsey County in inspecting and maintaining the Portland Avenue culvert.
Mr. Cole, comments?
I'll just add to that response by stating that we do have the ability, if it is determined that a lack of maintenance, a failing culvert or culvert placed constitutes an obstruction of the drainage system, you do have the authority to compel its replacement or maintenance. So Mr. Munson is absolutely correct in how he described that. But again, we, even though they may be, it may be private infrastructure in the public system, you still have the authority as the Drainage Authority to compel its maintenance or replacement if it constitutes an obstruction to the efficiency of the system.
Anybody else that would like to speak tonight? Please name an address. Give us your comments.
Hello, this is Dennis Helander. I live at 2558 Buffalo Street. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Oh, good. Okay, I live, it's in between Portland and Buffalo Street, you know, after it crosses Grand. We live right on the creek. Matter of fact, we've got a couple wood duck houses in the center of the creek. I think it showed up in one of the pictures that you showed, shown earlier there. That's kind of one of my questions, you know, has this been approved already, the funding? And if it's going to happen, when will it happen? Because, you know, I'd like to get notified so I could move the wood duck houses so they're not in the way. And my neighbors have a bridge across the creek so their kids could get together and play easier. That bridge is probably going to be in the way, so I don't have to figure out how we can move that. I don't know, maybe the, the equipment that's being used to do the ditch could help move the bridge away and maybe replace it. That might be a big ask, but I'm just throwing it out there. What else I got? Oh, I was kind of curious, what, okay, if we re-excavate the ditch, what kind of equipment will be used and where will the spoils be placed? And I think that's pretty much all of my questions, so it's kind of like a barrage of them, but let me know what you think.
Okay, thank you for that. And then we'll go to Mr. Cole, want to answer that?
Madam President, in response to Mr. Helander's first comment, I know the district historically has been very accommodating and tolerant of some of those private structures and other, I would say, accessories within and adjacent to its public drainage system, so long as they are not obstructing the efficiency of the drainage system. So those pilings for his or the posts for his wood duck houses, for example, if they began to accumulate a lot of trash and such, you may be asking him to remove that. We also have a, as a matter of course and habit and practice, we also, in advance of any work to be done on the drainage system, the inspectors usually go through and identify those types of accessories or other things that may be impacted by proposed maintenance and give the landowners the opportunity to remove them or to relocate them temporarily during the work. Again, you have not had a practice of prohibiting those things unless they become an obstruction to the drainage system. So in response to Mr. Helander's first comments, he will, he would, if the district continues to honor its past practices, be notified in advance of work with sufficient time to be able to move or remove those things. And then in the case that they're not removed in a timely manner, they may be removed by the contractor and usually there are specific constructions in our contract requiring them to be removed without damaging them and placing them in a location where the landowner can retrieve them and replace them if that's what's necessary. So again, in most cases, we've been able to employ that practice with success and notify the landowners. I will let the engineer comment on the type of equipment because it's going to vary from place to place within a ditch of this type in an urban setting. But the statutes require that the spoils be spread and leveled in the area of anticipated original construction adjacent to the ditch. That becomes, as the district managers know, more difficult as urbanization and encroachments occur within the area adjacent to the public drainage system. So what has been our practice is where possible, we spread and level those spoils and we try to do that at a very, very low grade, like a 10 to 1, so that it can be, and we reestablish the vegetation. Sometimes that requires the elimination or movement of trees if those trees are obstructing our access to the ditch. But we try to minimize that as well and coordinate with landowners in advance of that. And then in some cases, we've actually had to remove the spoils simply because there was not sufficient location to spread and level them immediately adjacent to the construction site. And in that case, we try to find a local disposal site to bring those. Oftentimes, we can find somebody who wants the additional material. So in response to at least his first and third questions, that would be the response and I'll defer to the engineer to talk about equipment that's typically used in these
Okay, thank you, Chad. Who's Garrett? Are you going to?
Yeah, I can address that other question. Typical equipment would be, you know, a track hoe, maybe a small dozer for spoil management. But as Mr. Cole alluded to, it can depend on the context in situations like this, whether or not a contractor chooses to use a mini excavator or some smaller piece of equipment or what the situation warrants, whether the profile actually shows that we need to remove, you know, maybe it's just a little dip out of the bottom to get some vegetation, maybe that's a smaller piece of equipment. Or if it needs to be a more significant cut, if we have two feet of accumulated sediment and some other obstructions, then maybe a larger piece of equipment is necessary and that can help or can impact the area that's necessary for that construction too. Typically in these situations, we try to limit the footprint of the repair, even within the right of way of the public drainage system to cause the least amount of disturbance as practicable, noting that the right of way is the reasonably necessary area to construct and maintain the public drainage system. But our practice has been to limit that impact as much as we can. A, it's, you know, preferable oftentimes for the landowner as well as be cost-effective.
Okay, Mr. Helander, does that answer your questions?
Pretty much. I was just wondering though, what is this, maybe the purpose of this meeting is to get approval and to get funding? Is that the case?
Well, go ahead.
The answer, the answer to that question, Mr. Helander, is no, this is not the purpose of this hearing tonight. The hearing tonight is just to receive evidence related to the original or subsequently improved condition and alignment and configuration of the ditch. Subsequent actions will occur as the board encounters them. And the board has a practice of, you know, ongoing inspection and routine minor maintenance to remove readily identified obstructions and other problems with the drainage system. Right now, I am not aware of any plan to reconstruct this system. But as with all the systems that are under the board's jurisdiction, the board assesses that need and that need is based both on the efficiency of the conveyance as an infrastructure and the infrastructure needs. And we've already heard a concern about regional or localized flooding. And so that's always a concern as to what work needs to be done. But again, tonight is not, not under consideration, any specific repair or any funding for a specific repair. And I think has been noted earlier as well, the minor maintenance program of the district is financed by the district and not by any localized water management district or special assessment to any lands affected by the drainage system.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. One more question. So is it safe to say that nothing will happen this summer or this fall?
That's, that's pretty safe.
My question, my first question was to Nick to try and answer Mr. Helander's question. When do we currently have this budgeted to be done?
Oh, I'll have to defer to Houston Engineering if you have that in front of you. It's slated out in a number of years, I believe.
Madam President, this is a district engineer auternus. Yes, so recently, this last year, every year, the district reevaluates its drainage system repair program and looks ahead to the larger capital projects that takes on for repairs. And this year, we did add Ramsey, Washington JD1 to that list of items. Generally, the district takes on about one drainage system per year due to the scale of these projects and, you know, simply the capacity the district has both in staffing and funding in order to complete these. And so, you know, Ramsey, Washington JD1 was essentially added to the end of that list. I believe the current timeframe that we have it listed for is roughly about a 2028 repair. And Um, and, uh, certainly the, um, um, district board has the opportunity to, um, reevaluate, um, that into the future. Um, that is just a time frame right now for, um, future planning purposes and, uh, and can be, um, you know, either accelerated or decelerated in the future depending on, um, the prioritization needs. So, but right now, um, as of, uh, last, I believe, March or April, um, I believe by consensus, the board, uh, agreed to slot it, uh, for approximately a 2028 or 2029 repair.
President Kreiner?
Go ahead.
That, uh, just to clarify though, in consistent with, uh, Mr. Cole's comment, the district does continue minor maintenance and inspection of the system. Uh, so you can, if you identify problems on the system, you're certainly welcome to call those into the district office, uh, things like beaver dams, fallen trees, some of these, uh, what I'll call rather routine, uh, challenges in, in maintaining the flow of the system. We do come out and address, those aren't, uh, prioritized, but the major repair is what, uh, Mr. Otterness was referring to.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak tonight? Anyone else in the audience?
Yes, uh, Mike Ludwig, 6090 117th Street North. Uh, I have a concern that the 1909 original ditch is not the RW JD number one ditch. And that's based on some of the historical records for the Washington-Ramsey County border. Now, the, the marker we're using now is not the original marker. Through the, uh, survey records, they could not find the original corner where Washington and Ramsey come together at section one and section six. They put a new marker in, and that's what we've been using currently over the last 50 years or so. Um, but looking at some of the historical documents and knowing that the Ramsey County-Washington County border is 12 miles from St. Croix River, uh, it would appear to me that this 1909 ditch is different than what we're looking at for the RW JD number one. That's it.
I can't tell. Okay, uh, maybe Mr. Cole would like to answer that? Or Garrett, either one?
Uh, I, I'm happy to answer, uh, to the extent that I was able to review Mr. Ludwig's original comment and some of that documentation. Um, again, Mr. Ludwig's comment, i- in my opinion, goes to the location of the county boundary, um, but not to the location of this drainage system. Uh, the historical record describes this drainage system, um, not only by, uh, the township's sections and range in some instances, but also by, uh, remaining landmarks on the landscape, including Shunum and Marsh and some of these other areas. Um, plus, we have an improvement to this drainage system that occurred, uh, subsequent to its original establishment that, uh, further described the original alignment. Um, and so we're very confident at the staff level that what we have identified on the ground as JD one is in fact JD one. And regardless of movement of county boundary or the resetting of monuments, that facility still exists on the ground as we believe it was generally originally constructed and subsequently approved, improved. And it does implicate lands in both, uh, Washington and Ramsey County, which, uh, I think further evidences why it was established as a judicial ditch back in its original construct, uh, uh, original establishment because it did affect lands in two counties, which would have been two separate, uh, governmental jurisdictions, which required the judicial intervention.
Mr. Ludwig, any further questions on that?
Uh, I, I think I'll need to send you more documentation on what I've found. Uh, I don't think I have anything else to show you right now.
Okay. Anyone else that'd like to comment? And does anybody have written materials? I think that we just heard that we do, we're going to submit some.
President Kreiner, Board of Managers, Mr. Ludwig did, uh, email, uh, via Ashley Ritchie, uh, his initial comment, uh, that he shared with us again here.
Okay.
Uh, the district will hold open the, the record for comments into the future here. We'll get to that in our, um, material. I'll say, of, of course, it, it sounds as though he has sensible.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Be no further testimony from the public. I close the public comment portion of the hearing. So at this point, the hearing is closed, and we will go into recommended action and more discussion.
President, uh, Kreiner, uh, continuing down the, the, the comment on the public record, uh, I think it's reasonable for the district to leave the record open, uh, for a period of time, uh, for folks to, to gather any information they'd like to submit to us, uh, in writing. I would suggest, uh, a date of June 4th, uh, if the, the record was closed, that's over a week's time. Uh, and also, you know, with COVID, provide some opportunity to get more information to the district.
Is that enough time, Mr. Ludwig? If there's anything else you'd want to present?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. So then I think we have a motion on the bottom page four, is that what we're looking at?
President Kreiner, if I could go a little bit further, so that would close the record, uh, at which point the engineer, uh, consulting engineer as well as, uh, counsel would assist in reviewing those materials. Uh, you noted the, uh, proposed motion at the bottom, uh, does include a blank for a time that the board would, uh, reconvene to consider an order, uh, based on the public hearing. Uh, and I would suggest June 23rd, which is your break, uh, regular board meeting.
Okay.
So that will provide a sufficient time to review the materials.
Materials on.
Yeah, create the order and, and notice.
Are you ready? I can certainly.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Madam President, I move that we direct staff to prepare findings in an order consistent with proceedings, including responses to all comments received through the public comment process, that the draft findings in order be written to effect the re-establishment, correction of the public drainage system records consistent with the engineer's findings, direct recording of the order to reflect the re-establishment, correction of the public drainage system record, and that we reass, recess this hearing to the board's regular meeting on June 23rd, 2021, at 9:00 AM, or by adjournment to an appropriate time on the board's agenda, at which meeting we will consider findings in an order for the proposed re-establishment and correction of the public drainage system records.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the board? Karen, then? We don't have to call for, call for all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Meeting is here.
Uh, recessed?
Recessed, excuse me. Okay, thank you, John. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Tom Schmidt, hi.